Okay, councillor. Thank you.
Our gracious only father, we're so thankful that we can come before this day. We're thankful for all the blessings that we have, that we were able to meet as councillors and mayor this day. We'd ask a special blessing upon those that can't be with us today, that their health and strength may be blessed, that they may be able to feel our love and support. We're grateful for the amazing community in which we are blessed to live in, help us this day, that we may be wise in our decision making, that we may be able to represent the town of Cardston residents well. We're thankful for the opportunity we have of living here and being a part of living in Alberta. We're grateful for all these things, and we say them humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you councillor. And I think today is official Indigenous Day, so...
Yesterday?
Yeah.
Yesterday.
Week. So we're part of the week now. So it's a good thing for all our First Nation citizen in our town and our neighbours. We will call this meeting to orders this 22nd day of June. And we have a regular town council meeting. We have three councillors that have been excused at this time. We have an addition to the agenda, and it will go under 7F.
Yes, I'd like to have just a brief discussion on Seventh Street and Ninth Avenue, the bypass.
Okay councillor Court. Seventh Street and bypass. So what we will need councillor Court is for you to approve the amendment, and we need to be united on this vote. So if you want to make a motion...
I will make the motion to adopt the agenda and the addition that was added.
Just the amendment.
Just the amendment. Approve the addition and then the addition of the councillor.
I'll make a motion for that too.
Okay. All in favour? Thank you. So now we need to approve the agenda. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
Okay. All in favour? Thank you so much. Our delegation seems to be late. Maybe was a little bit of misunderstanding.
Yeah, with our other delegation not coming, we tried to inform Mrs Henninger, but she may have just not got the message today. So she may be here for 5:15.
It's all right. So we will carry on. Okay, so we have the minutes of the regular meeting of June the 8th. So there is a... There was a tweak there that I sent to chairman that was fixed. So otherwise, any questions? Go ahead councillor.
The tweak that you sent, it still has councillor Benbury as a timing.
Yeah, that was fixed also.
Okay.
And there was something else in one of the motions.
Thank you.
That's been fixed.
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes.
Okay. All in favour? Thank you very much. So let's go on to 6 bylaws and policy. There's a draft bylaw 1696. We did first and second reading, but Jeff, there has been a few changes regarding the fancier's licence. And I can just give you a few of my feedback, and maybe if you want to address that.
Sure. So you saw this quite a while back. We took a bit of a pause because we were reaching out to some of our horse owners, those that drive carriages. And we were waiting for feedback. We only got the two letters, which you've seen, from Dr Jones and Mr Olsen. And so we didn't put any legislation related to carriages or driving horses on the streets in here. We wanted to have some discussion with you. I should preface, there's no panic to pass third reading here, by the way. So don't feel like there's any obligation tonight if we're not quite there. While this was in its limbo, Tara and Jill wanted to put some more robust detail in around fanciers' licences, and Shaun as well. So that's mostly what you see in the red, is anything to do with that. And so I just want a little bit of feedback tonight. One is, do we want to put any type of legislation surrounding the horses and driving horses? Or do we simply ask them to be considerate in their activities? We can reply to them all and see how that flies. And is there any other concern with additions to the bylaw?
Okay. If I can address maybe the fancier's licence, for example. In the definition, there maybe is a need to kind of tweak it to make it a little bit more clearer, so that it becomes more congruent with other sections of the same policy, which were the item 21 and then the item 64.1 in there. So my point of view, if we were to kind of tidy up the definition regarding the numbers, not on the upper end, but on the lower end, so it's clear when you read paragraph 21 of 63, what we're talking about without having to refer to it.
So if the mayor, I think the concern there is that the definition defines, which is what is intended, the... And then when you get into the fanciers' licence detail, it breaks it down further to say that you can have up to two animals of any one kind without a fancier's licence, and then over that, so you get that third or fourth cat, then you have to get a fancier's licence for that. But in no case can you have more than seven animals on the property. And so I would, I think it's, I agree that in the definition, it talks about the upper end, that you can have up to seven, but it doesn't talk about the need for it if you go over two animals of one kind.
Okay, so maybe all what needs to be done in that definition is to simply say as seven of one or mixed kind. It's seven animals, dogs or cats, or whatever else.
Well, I'm not sure we're comfortable with even having seven cats with a fancier's licence. I think we were trying to limit that even if you had over two of one kind, then you would force the licence and the inspection. We have some properties with well over that number of animals, and the neighbours aren't always particularly pleased.
So it's any kind of animal, so that covers... See, what I did not understand when I read 21, 21 say, "A person is guilty of an offence if they have more than two of the same type of animal or more than four animal, told without a fancier licence." So a fancier's licence does not mean one group of animal of the same kind. It just means it could be a mix of animal.
But the list is pretty restrictive of domestic animals.
Right.
Right.
Councillor Court.
I'm assuming the fancier's licence is for people that are breeding dogs and stuff like that? Is that the idea?
It actually applies, because it's only for dogs over six months. Animals over six months, I should say. No, we really find, Shaun reported to a house today with five dogs and I think four cats.
Oh, I got you. That's what, okay.
Right? Just in one house. And so we run into people that just have many, many animals in one home. And it starts to become a public health issue in some cases. It certainly becomes, in most cases, a neighbourhood nuisance issue.
Okay.
And so we're trying to... We've always had limits. They haven't always been followed. But that's what this is getting at, councillor. So if you're breeding and you're getting rid of them before they hit six months, then you don't, you don't have to do that.
So the fancier's licence does not only apply to people who want to breed animal, is any owners of animal. Maybe that is what needs to be explained a little bit better. Because to me, when I read fancier, I think it's a breeding kind of licence.
Sure.
Instead this, the way you describe it, means ownership of so many animals. Maybe that needs to be tweaked.
And again, we can go back to that 3.12 definition. There's no need to pass this tonight.
Right.
And see if we can make that a little clearer. We're happy to do that.
Yeah.
Maybe I didn't see when I was looking through, how much is a fancier's licence?
Jill, do you know off the top of your head while I'm scrolling? $50.
It's not a lot of money. We're not talking much money. No. I mean... Now, regarding the other issue, which is a dropping of horses, we have had multiple conversation, and know for some around this table, it's very frustrating. Over the 11 years I have been on council, honestly, I never had one citizen calling me, telling me they were offended by it. And I had them on the front of my house too. Yeah. It's an interesting deposit, to say the least. It doesn't smell, but it sounds slightly, if you want to call it so.
I'll be the first citizen to complain there. Now, you have one.
Right.
But councillor Suck and I were talking about this earlier, and I've seen two or three deposits around town this week. Councillor Suck had one by his place, and then when he came back, it was gone. So whoever's horse deposited, they cleaned it up.
Okay, all right.
That's all I want him to do.
Okay, so that should fix a problem then?
So I'm going to ask Geoff a question here. Geoff, would this be easy? Like, putting it in a bylaw is like driving a thumbtack with a sledgehammer.
Yeah, I agree.
So can you make a policy that, you know, we would expect you to clean up?
It's interesting, because if it's an expectation of a behaviour...
Just to be a motion.
Then, so policies are normally focused inwardly. This is how we will do things as an organisation. And the bylaws in place, because if there's an infraction or a penalty for non-compliance, that's what gives us the teeth.
Right.
So for me, it kind of goes between ask nicely or have it in a bylaw. And I realise that they're both kind of on really far ends of the spectrum.
Right.
Can we maybe find something councillor? I don't know if maybe that would work for you. Could we send a letter back to those people that we had contacted and let them know that we appreciated the cleaning of the deposits?
I want to be clear, because this is going out, I'm not opposed to having the horses on the street. I think it's great. I think it shows our town, we're a carriage town. But it would really, really nice, I have to pick up my dog, maybe they... And I understand we're talking a little bit different size of deposit here, but it'd be really nice if they would go and clean that up after they get back. I mean, that's all I'm asking.
It's an expectation that we have, that if you're going to drive your carriages around, which is great, we appreciate it, but when you're done, go back and clean up.
That's all I ask.
Councillor Brown?
If, is there a licence or something? Can I go get some horses for fun and grab a wagon and drive around Cardston?
Sure can.
So there's no, I mean, you should be in fear, but anybody can do it? Because I was going to say, if in fact there was a thing, there was a licence, or there was a something that they needed, then with that could come a letter that says, surely we would appreciate it. Because if I have a dog, which I don't, and I take it for a walk, and it does what it does on councillor Suck's lawn, it is my job to pick it up, right? So, but I would think that when I get a dog licence, that's talked about, oh, here's your dog park, and here's, please pick up after your animal. Is there not...
But that's done by bylaw. Right? So you have a bylaw that's governing that.
But I think that's my point, is do we need that for this?
I mean, one approach I'm just throwing out, you could take is, the first step would be a letter saying, you know, we appreciate your voluntary compliance, so we don't have to make it a bylaw?
Yeah, I like that.
Because that would be the next step, if it's a continued issue?
Okay. I just think it's respectful.
Yeah.
I don't want to put ride in the book.
No, I love it. It's awesome, but I...
Do you want to go for a motion towards a directing administration?
I would make that motion, directing administration to send letters to those that like to drive their carriages around town, if they could please...
With...
Yeah, how do you want to word that?
With suggestion?
Suggestion.
Or the expectation.
Because we don't want to put it in the bylaw, so... Chairman, you got that figured out?
Well, we can explain that, that we don't want to make it a bylaw. We want this activity to continue.
Yes.
We would just ask for their courtesy.
Clean up.
You know, those kinds of things. We can word it to encourage them prior to exploring a bylaw any further, something like that.
Yeah, that's the motion.
Okay. All right. All in favour? So a letter is probably best. So we will not pass that third reading. Administration will bring it back with a little bit of tweaking on the definition of the fancier's licence, to try to distinguish that from the breeding and the ownership. All right. Bylaw 16... No, you know what? We're going to stop right there, and we're going to allow for Debbie Henninger to come and speak to the dog park committee. Please come and forward. And thanks for coming on this very hot day. And you don't need a mask, you're far enough from everybody here.
I didn't have one in this car that I'm driving. Anyhow, thank you again for seeing us, and us as the collective dog park people. We're just, you know, chomping at the bit, excited to get started on the work that needs to be done in order to have this move forward. Now that there has been some grants that were written, and one grant was declined, the other grant is still in process, and we won't hear about that until September. However, they have agreed to let us do some of the work prior to acceptance of that grant that won't affect it. So we would like to get our volunteers ready, which we have. They're ready. They're asking me about the dog park. I guess what I'm here for today is the go-ahead, the let's start this, to work with, I'm assuming with Geoff, and walk out that boundary that we had set out way back. I guess that was January, I think. And then to have the town start with the electricity, that I understand the town needs to do, not us. We do have those funds in that account that can be used for that. So just kind of waiting for the let's start, and what do we need to do as a committee in order to get that ball rolling.
Okay. Thank you for that. Debbie, if I recall, the February motion that was made by council was one at the times that was made in principle, waiting for the committee, dog committee and administration to work together, the details of your recommendation. What happened then, it was brought back to council, and when it was brought back to council, there was actually not especially a full unity regarding the location and the size of that park. There never was a motion that came out of that. So although I know you are anxious for that location, which is in Lion's Park, that council still has to discuss that. So, because when you have something in principle, nothing is certain until the motion is made regarding the particular of it. So I just wanted to let, to help you understand what that in principle meant. Because I don't want you disappointed if things don't go exactly the way you want it to go. So that has to be discussed afterwards, and we will.
Afterwards today? Like, can we get an answer from this council? I don't know if that's something I can ask for, but we're just looking for...
Okay. Debbie, because as you can see, we showed three councillors, I took it upon myself to call those councillors to try to understand their position. And I will talk to council afterwards, when we discuss this item. So yes, you will have an answer today.
And does anything that I bring forth today make a difference in that decision for those three people who are not here?
I think their mind is pretty set on a certain idea, and I will discuss their perspective for games.
Okay. Can I ask a few questions regarding what we do know? Is it regarding the size that is the most concerned? Is it regarding the location itself?
I think the main issue is still the location.
Oh, okay.
I know councillor Brown is frustrating.
Frustrating.
Frustrating her.
Bull stop.
And I appreciate that, because she put a lot of time walking the bottom of the valley to try to find a good location. I understand that. But as you know, council, council decision is always a majority of council.
Correct.
Right?
The location, as I remember, had many people's input for a few months, where it was discussed on what would be safest, what would be most beneficial for the entire community, what would be easily accessible for everybody. So I want that to be part of your discussion, that putting anything on the outskirts of town is really alienating anybody who lives not near that. It's also unlikely that those places are lit, and it's unlikely that those places will be utilized to the best of their abilities, as this town understands that this will be a hub. This is the gathering place. There are so many people asking about this dog park, that I know council probably doesn't see as much as I do. So I'm just wanting to put my passion and to relay the messages that I have been given from people in the community that have watched this on Channel 32 and all those things. And I'm grateful that they are out there. But this location, after discussing what would be needed for a dog park, what would be needed for the safety of our people, and what was really a desire, recognizing we couldn't be near a lot of places, we can't be near horses. That was something that was discussed very emphatically because of the trail. So if we can't be near horses, and I look at the outskirts of town, there are horses right on the outskirts of everything town owns. And somebody with a horse might be just as against having it near the rodeo academy, the agridome, the soccer park where there's quite a big field of horses. They might not be okay with their horses being near dogs either. And I do want that remembered, that we needed a place that was away from horses. We had lots of options that we came to the town with, that said, these are some options, this is all town-owned. And they were smaller areas, but the ones that I felt the town agreed with me on was a safety issue and away from these horses. And that's where I feel very strongly.
Debbie, thank you for clarifying all that and bringing all that. And as I say, we have that presentation on our agenda for discussion a little bit later on. And Geoff will stay in contact with you, no doubt.
Thank you.
Okay.
And after today's discussion, assuming everybody is good, what steps do we need next? And do I just discuss this with Geoff? Are we good to go tomorrow? If that discussion matches everybody?
So let's first of all finish the discussion on it, and then I think we can then lay a plan to move forward. I can't really give you that plan until we decide what the location will be and give you the go-ahead.
And last question. Am I able to be an observer of this discussion?
Absolutely. It's a public meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Thank you. So let's go to bylaw 1697. Inter municipal development plan. If you remember, we had a concern regarding the changes in the boundaries that were presented without public input. We have since then sent the letter with the changes to all those that were affected and who had received the first letter to start with. And as far as we know, there has not been any pushback or concerns. Therefore, that leaves us really to consider further readings, second and third reading, and conclude this IDP. I would say there is really no other place to go at this point. Geoff?
I forgot to put this in your background, or if you're okay at this point to proceed, we do need a resolution to adopt amendments on first reading?
Yes.
With the map changed?
Right.
And then you can proceed with readings.
Right. And I would say, if people are not concerned, then we need to respect that. So what I need right now, I need an amendment on...
A resolution to approve.
A resolution to adopt the amendment on the map. Councillor Selk?
I'll make the resolution to adopt the changes of the map of the IDP.
Okay. All in favour? All right. So now we need to do second and third reading. Councillor Court?
I'll make a motion for second reading of bylaw 1697, the IDP.
All right. Thank you. All in favour? Thank you. And councillor Brown, do you want to get a shot at the third reading?
Love it. Receive third and final reading of bylaw 1697.
Okay. All in favour? Thank you. All right. So that concludes that portion of our ICF. It's been a long drawn affair. Yeah. 6C, it's an IFB, 2021, a pool fees. If you remember last year, when we had the COVID, we prorated the rate for family and for single kind of season passes. And I think the ask from the committee, the recommendation that that would do the same. And maybe councillor Brown, you want to go for it?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I was just going to say, the Parks and Rec Committee that I sit on absolutely was in favour of by this. They felt that because our season is a little bit shorter, and because of COVID and everything, that was reasonable. So I make a motion to approve, make a, I make a motion to approve swimming pool rates for 2021 season, as seen in the adoption.
Okay. $120 for family pass and $60 for single pass?
Yep.
All in favour? Thank you. So that's carried forward. So let's go on to seven other business. 7A, there's some election resolutions. There's four of them. Councillor Selk?
Make a motion that council appoint Suzanne Pearson as the returning officer for the 2021 municipal election.
Thank you. All in favour? Thank you. So now we need to add up the deputy.
I'd make a motion that we appoint Jill Henninger as a substitute returning officer for the 2021 election.
Thank you. All in favour? Thank you very much. Now we need the designated institutional vote. Councillor Brown?
I make a motion to council to authorize the returning officer to designate the location of one or more institutional voting stations for the 2021 municipal election.
Okay. All in favour? Thank you. And the last one, councillor Selk?
Make a motion that council provide for holding one or more advance votes for the 2021 municipal election.
Okay. All in favour? Thank you. So 7C, 988 crisis hotline.
We got B still.
Oh, 7B. Yes. Let's talk about Canada Day a little bit. We can hear from the different news, that there are some towns that have decided, especially in BC, to forego the Canada Day celebration altogether, including fireworks. There are some other towns that are going to jump the gun and have parades in southern Alberta on the 1st of July. although we still do not know which phase we will re-enter at that point. So for example, Counselor Court used to go to Raymond to the parade with.
It was this year.
And are user designated to go in that parade?
Well, the only problem with that is I like to sit with my grandchildren. So I'll be there, but may not be with the guy riding in the car.
With all due respect, I've been in every Raymond first of July parade, so.
You have?
Yes.
Oh, you have been the one? Perfect. Do you want it?
I just have a lot of grandchildren in that area.
Let's see. Barnes, no? Yeah, I guess I'm going.
Okay, all right. So.
You gonna throw candy, counselor?
So that is it? All right.
I'm not sure.
So.
Yes, they said.
Find out if we can toss candy and if so.
You can. They went full tilt on it.
All right.
They sent us stuff today, so I don't know.
So I just want to know how you feel. I just want to know how you feel regarding the fireworks. Is there a go or what?
I thought the province said that mask was July 1st. Did I miss something there? I thought the premier said that.
It's, it's a question, is a quantity of people?
No, I, I think everything should be stage three. That should be the first day of stage three and no restrictions from mental health, to my understanding. That's the goal. It's really, I think, what the mayor was alluding is there's this kind of political piece to it this year, too.
So I'm in huge support of doing fireworks in Cartston on Canada Day. I've had lots of young families asking me, is there going to be this? Is there going to be that? And what I, what I've been saying is council so far has said that we were doing the fireworks because it was my understanding we were, and that heritage, our Heritage Week extravagance, I was going to be great. So that, that was kind of our big party was Heritage Week. So I, I'm a huge supporter of it. I think we go ahead. I feel like it's Canada Day. We're in Canada. Let's go.
It's time to open up.
I agree.
Yeah. If I might, Mayor. I think when we had this conversation, we all sort of agreed that fireworks, yes, party in the park, no, so.
It's a compromise.
When I prepared this, we just weren't 100% sure if we were going to be into phase three when I did the RFD. And then as of then, it seems like every intention is we will be.
Do we need a?
No, I think, I think we're good. I think we're good. We leave it at that.
Carry on.
Yeah, carry on. Okay. The Chinook Arch Resolution. Now that's a nine eight eight. Let's go back to seven C. I want to jump back and forth, the crisis hotline. If in your pocket you have a letter from MP Rachel Harder, who's the MP for Lethbridge, and there has been with the COVID issue a very strong increase of suicide in our country. And there has been in a house, a desire to create a crisis hotline to be able to help the people who are in trouble. And so I think that if you are willing to support that, we could write a letter or go ahead.
I usually take on these long motions, so I'll give it a go.
Good for you. You like to read.
Support for 988 crisis line. Whereas the federal government has passed a motion to adopt 988, a national three-digit suicide and crisis hotline, and whereas the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic has increased the demand for suicide prevention services by 200%, and whereas existing suicide prevention hotlines require the user to remember a 10-digit number and to go through directories or be placed on hold, and whereas in 2022, the United States will have in place a national 988 crisis hotline, and whereas the town of Cartston recognizes that it is a significant and important initiative to ensure critical barriers are removed to those in crisis and seeking help. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Cartston endorses this 988 crisis line initiative and that staff be directed to send a letter indicating such support to the local MP, MLA, Federal Minister of Health, the CRTC, and local area municipalities to indicate our support.
Thank you. Well done. All in favor? Thank you. I think it's an important thing to add to our toolbox of crisis interventions. Seven D, the Chinook Arch Resolution. I'm a little concerned regarding that resolution for the good reason that the numbers that are being used are going to be the last census or even not especially that, but one that the government deems to be the right number for our town. And in consequence, as you know, every requisition is based on numbers. And if they don't have enough money, the requisitions go up. We do not know from the letter that we received or the motion that I have, what is the impact on the local libraries? What will be the impact on our requisition? There is no information there. And it, to me, I don't feel like giving my consent, nor my consent, to something I don't understand what the consequence is from a monetary perspective. It might be insignificant, or it might be significant. So we need to know that. So Jeff, have you received any more information regarding that?
No, Mayor. I, I put calls into Robin at Chinook Arch. I haven't heard back from him. I have mixed thoughts on this item because if. So, so the methodology will be the, the most recent federal census, and then the province applies a formula to it year over year to try and have a best estimate of your kind of moving population. So all municipal census numbers will not be considered for these types of things now. If all of us adjust kind of the same, then everything stays.
About the same.
But I don't, we don't know that yet. And the challenge for Chinook Arch as well is that the formula from the province, while established, is not, the numbers are not set in stone. We don't know what each municipality's new population numbers going forward will be just yet. So they're in a bit of a bind as well. They're just trying to get ahead of it from a governance point of view on the agreement with the municipalities. I don't see this as particularly pressing until nearing the end of the year. I think we have some time. I was hoping maybe Counselor Barnes would be able to speak to it a bit as he's assigned to that committee. But he's not here tonight. So with, with Robin not calling me back and, and with Counselor Barnes not here, we are lacking a little bit of, of information.
Okay. Can we push it to another agenda when we have a little bit more information? Okay. So we will not make a resolution?
Yeah. If you just want to leave it, then I will collect, I'll make sure I get ahold of Robin. Maybe we bring him in electronically to a meeting or something and get some more information.
And Counselor Brown is on a finance committee, so I like to know what he knows. Thank you. All right. So now let's go to the business of our delegation, which is seven E and the dog park. Let's talk about the location to begin with because it seems to me that that is a little bit of a hangup here. Yes?
Today I actually drove, drove my bike on the path back and forth there. I know Mrs. Henninger has concerns about the horses. I have concerns about the people on the, on the path, five or 10 feet away from a bunch of dogs. I know my, I have a dog. I know they bark. They bark at people. They don't know. That's a bit of a concern for me because that's a very heavily used area down with, with the playground area, with the, with the spray park. And so I am concerned about the location with that number of dogs, with people on that walking path. So that's my concern. I'm not so sure I can support that location because of that.
Okay. Fair enough. Counselor Selk?
Yeah. I have similar concerns in that if you drove by the splash park today, there must have been 40 people in the splash park.
There was only 10, Counselor.
What's that?
There was only 10. Ever only 10.
That looked like 40. So we're splashing half.
There were 30 invisible that were there that weren't there until July the 1st. So, you know, it's, it is. It's a, it's a catch 22 in terms of locating with respect to horses or locating with respect to people because it is a very busy area right now, especially.
Yeah. And that was the same comment I heard from Counselor Brown and from Counselor Ben-Gree. Counselor Ben-Gree called me at 8:30 this morning regarding that item. And Counselor Brown still feels that the best location would be by the agridome. And his position is that if you are in Lethbridge, people have to drive to the dog park regardless of the size of their dog to be able to play in those park. And he feels that is a more appropriate place rather than to be in a place where there's a lot of children and a lot of other activity. So that is really what I heard pretty well from both counselors that are not there. Counselor Brown, you are in support of that location?
Oh, I, I can.
Go ahead.
So I, so I guess my frustration is this, is that when the proposal of the dog park, when I brought it forward, it was to find a location. Then we directed administration to go and do a walkabout and try and find, look at a bunch of maps and try and come up with an area that the neighbors wouldn't hate us, that was away from horses. We were looking for that perfect area, which doesn't exist. That, and, and then Debbie Henninger came up. It wasn't me. Debbie Henninger came up with, she was doing a walkabout, and she came up with this idea off the path, off the street, but yet well lit. She met with administration. They, we walked it, myself and Jill and Debbie walked it to try and come up with, you know, could this work? Is this a good area? Because things like wheelchair accessible, being able to go as a woman myself and feel safe in that area, which Debbie brought up. There was light. There was, we were looking for an area that wasn't going to use a million dollars in order to get it up to code, a safe place for animals and for people to go. And I feel like that's what we did. And when we talked about, when we talked about horses being close to this, it was my understanding, and Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, but they talked about putting slats on that side up against that bike path. So we didn't have the barking and we didn't have. And I also think the mis, the misunderstanding is that at every time of the day, you have 500 dogs at a dog park. It actually, that's not how it works. I was just at a dog park last time we were in Calgary, and you know, there's two or three, right? And then they leave and then two or three come. It's a, it's an all-day thing. It's not like it's, it's only open at certain hours. So for me, I respect council, your decisions. But for me, this site was as a female safe. It was non-residential, which was important to this council, was my understanding. It wasn't going to take a massive amount of money. And we really pushed the dog park group to say, put your money where your mouth is. Do you really want this? And they have. They worked their butts off and they came up with over $11,000, is my understanding. And I feel like, I feel like it's a little bit of a, I mean, I understand what you're saying. We said in principle. But I just, I feel like by putting them out at the agridome, and I know the area because I've walked it and I went out and looked at it, no one's going to go there. That is a busy road. People like to walk their dogs. They leave their house, they walk to the dog park. Really, they're going to walk down that road that you have in your backyard and their vehicles are flying by it. They're going to go on that road with their kids and their dogs to go to the dog park? It's not going to happen. That's, that's my perspective.
Counselor Court, thank you, Counselor Brown.
The road is not safe, but there's a constant, constant stream of people walking that road.
Yeah.
All day long.
I agree.
A lot of them walk the whole circuit. Some of them are just up and down there. But there's a constant stream of people on that road, walking on that road. And I agree, it's not safe. But I also think that you could light that area. It's only a block from my house, so I'm, it's in my neighborhood. I think you could light that area right there. People, like you said, people in Lethbridge have to drive to the dog park. Maybe that's what we're looking at. I'm just concerned about that location with the number of people down there. It's become a center for kids to play. It's become a center for a lot of things. And maybe we're giving away some real estate that maybe you want to expand some of the activities for humans down that area. And that's kind of prime real estate to me. So that's kind of why I'm kind of hesitating on that area.
Okay. All right. So right now, there's no support. But Jeff, I need to understand something. Imagine that location if it were at the agridome. The issue is an issue of safety here and an issue of being lit up properly. What can be done over there if that was the location? I mean, all those are ifs.
Yeah. And I'm afraid my answers are very qualified there, too, just because I don't know what infrastructure is adjacent to it right now. I just don't know. Obviously, there's power out there, but I just don't have a visual in my head of exactly where that is and what it would take to, and what it would take to add that kind of infrastructure. I can certainly find it out, but I don't know right now.
Okay. So I hate to talk to, to you, Debbie, but from the discussion we're having, the support for this location is not there. And that's what I kind of sensed.
May I speak to this?
You, you may. Counsel, are you okay if Debbie can come? Please come.
We want to work so both council and this dog committee or park and the users are all happy. I don't, I don't believe many would be happy with the agridome, but that is not, that's beside the point. What I have a, a new proposal based on what you're telling me is if we put up temporary fencing at your agridome location and you were able to see how many users are using it, at what times of the day, what kind of noise you're having, what you're dealing with as far as messes go, would you then be willing to make a permanent dog park in our first location? Because I think when you see, we're talking about children, dogs are walking that path nonstop anyways, and I don't hear them barking at every single person that walks past them. Dogs at a dog park really could care less about the people around them. They're playing. And there might be one or two people that walk by that they bark at because they're not being watched by an owner. Dogs are going to bark. We, nobody's going to say that doesn't happen. Dogs are going to make messes. Dogs are going to be dogs. That's going to happen no matter where we put this. And I don't believe with the proper fencing we've discussed and the proper care and bylaws that can be written, that we're going to end up with this big hullabaloo of children and dogs intermixing. So many dogs in this community come from homes with children. So many.
Thank you. Counselor Selk?
I have a question, Debbie. So one of the issues I think that council has with respect to the location that is your first choice is the amount of real estate that you want there. And council, I don't think is prepared to give up that much real estate.
This is not our first choice. If I go back to our original choices, it was in people's yards. It was along the pathway. This was our sixth choice that we worked with council to provide something that you agreed in principle with, that we agreed with as well. This is our sixth choice, not our first. And our agridome choice was never on our list.
So what was your second choice?
There was two, there was three spots along the river. Our first choice was up on the hill of Knights Ave, Knight Street.
Remember that?
I can't remember what it is.
Was it?
Um, that was our first choice.
I remember that.
Um, the second choice, third choice and fourth choice were different locations along the river walkway. We also had another choice close to where Mayor Cronin lives. Up on that hill, there was one behind the provincial building. And then there was also this location, which came about quite later after having that discussion. And noting during, let's, let's take, I guess, nine months of the year, you're not dealing with children at that park. When we discussed this, not a soul was at the park anytime I've ever visited it. There is two months of a lot of excitement and, and I'm happy for that, but people walk their dogs year-round. And a safe place that is close to parking, we're gonna end up spending a lot of money providing parking somewhere along that agridome area, which at this point, there is none. And you're going to have people who use that agridome, who have already approached me saying they are very against having dogs for the same reason that the carriage house was.
Councillor Brown, thank you.
So Parks and Rec Board, when Jill Henninger and her group came and they brought up doing disc golf along that same river bottom. And we had to meet with the Remington Centre. And the Remington Centre said that according to their, according to, and Jill, correct me if I'm wrong, but according to their insurance, they were, they could not run their horses on that river bottom if our, if the disc golf was there. And so the Parks and Rec Board talked and figured, tried to figure things out, sent them back to work on it. But during that same discussion, the reason I'm bringing it up, that same discussion was, well, we're gonna have, if we put the dog park down there, will it affect the horses? Will that be an issue? And the answer was no, because the horses don't go in this area. So I find it interesting that we're now talking about putting, so we couldn't put disc golf next to horses, but now we're talking about putting dogs to, dogs over by where horses are because the horses are at the agridome, they're in those fields, which are close to this area that council's talking about. So now, are we then asking, like, I just find that, how, how, how does that work in that location?
I don't know councillor. I don't have the answer.
One other thought that I had from before when we were discussing with you guys about locations was, I have the impression, I suppose is the right word, that there's nobody who really wants this in their backyard. And by putting it on any location other than our sixth location that we discussed or down in the river bottom, which did already come up with other problems, we're in people's backyard. We are, at any location or their front yard, if it was at the location with you. So I feel like, have you polled everybody, because there was quite a lot of people at our first choice who came to you and said, I am absolutely against where they're proposing this. And enough voices from those made that location not a possibility because there was no other use for that land. We wanna pick somewhere. Additionally, I've been told the agridome land that you're proposing based on, I'm guessing based on what we talked about before, because you did look at the agridome before, is on a
Road allowance.
Yeah, road allowance. So what's to say in twenty years or ten years that that road allowance doesn't need to be used? And we get booted out of something that we spent this money trying to build and beautify? And now we are moved out to another location that we could have just planted, beautified and grown as exactly what we visioned this to be?
Yeah, I think the, that comment is interesting because any council can change their mind about what's happening on a piece of land. Unfortunately, regardless of, of the location. Yes.
Okay, so let me clarify. Whether it was the first, second or twenty-fifth choice, the place that we're talking about, how much land do you want there? Because you were originally talking about going right up against the pool and no one has an appetite for that.
Understood.
And I would say all the way down to the walking path, no one has an appetite for that. There's a corner piece that there, you might be able to get an appetite from, but that would be reasonably small. Now, I'm just throwing that out there. So having said that, something to consider. And the mayor's right, even if you did put your dog park there, subsequent councils could say, yeah, we're using it for something else that you need to move.
I did not understand that, but okay.
Yeah, no, that's a fact unfortunately.
Well, that is my concern. It's a recreation hub there. We might wind up putting something else there, whatever it might be. As for the agridome, I'm, maybe I'm just not thinking, I know where this road allowance is, right next to it is, is an empty buffalo paddock. It's fenced right to the eyebrows. We could run, run fence across that thing. You've got the parking lot to the west and it's done. I understand that you don't want it out there. It could easily be converted into a, maybe a temporary dog, like you were talking about.
Yeah.
It could easily be, and there's parking there, parking lot on the west. The horses tend to be further over by the agridome and the fields over to the north. They don't tend to be there because there's a parking lot there. And the only thing there is that mud log thing right now. You could make, you could make a pretty good log park right in that triangle right there. But again, if you want to try that temporarity and see how it works, I don't know, maybe that's the idea.
Would you be willing to revisit this in the year when we can see?
There's gonna be a new council in the year.
I don't want, I guess I'm, I'm, I don't want is the wrong sentence. I guess my reluctance is that if we, or you agreed to use this as a temporary, see how things work and, and test the dog park owners, or not owners, the dog park users to go back and revisit that other location, I guess that this isn't the council to ask.
No.
But I don't want it to be something that is a permanent at this point. I get, I don't know if I'm making sense.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. So what you are asking of this council now is in lieu of the location in Lions Park, is to look at the location at the agridome against your best wishes, but as a trial run, to see how it goes on that location with temporary fencing. That's correct? Is that what you said?
Somewhat. When you say in lieu of, no, that's not what I want.
No, I mean, in lieu, in lieu of means right now because there is no consensus. Yes.
So, just a thought. We're using words like in lieu of. We're using words like trial area.
Let's say direct center.
Right. So, I don't want to go there. So, what if, rather than get rid of in lieu of, and if we're gonna talk a temporary area, what if we put a temporary area at this location that we've talked about and we see if it will work? And maybe, I understand what councillor Silk is saying. I understand about prime location. Maybe we look at this, we've got the map written in front of us, sorry. But if we look at this location and we scooch maybe that fence back, like, make sure to get that word, Shem. Scooch it back from the pathway. If we scooched it back and maybe, you know, made it a little square or something, just as a trial area, could we not? Because we're talking about proving and we're talking about the dog owners. Let's let them show us how it can be. Why not let them show us how it can be here? In a smaller area made, that, that maybe is, can be used as a trial run. Just a thought.
So that's an interesting alternate. Thank you. Councillor?
I think I would be reluctant to do that, given that we have three councillors missing.
Yeah.
They, two of them have been pretty
adamant, yeah.
adamant. So Debbie, this is a difficult one. And, you know, I think the notion of having a trial park at the agridome location probably has some traction, but I'm just guessing. I don't know.
Well, I would think right now, just for supporting that, so.
From what I'm hearing, even a trial down in the Lions Park area is not in anybody's head. Am I correct?
Well, we don't have the other to tell us after that conversation what their thinking is, so it's difficult to say your name.
You have a meeting next week?
Yes.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Can that decision be in two weeks?
We can make a recommendation at that meeting, but that can give you enough of a, a heads up.
We understand you're anxious to get going. You might like to do this yesterday.
And you know, I want to congratulate your group. Raising eleven thousand dollars is no small feat, so.
Four months.
So a congratulation for that, kudos. But it doesn't solve some of the logistic, as you can see. So we need to deal with that logistic. Councillor Court?
I'm, I'm looking at the map. I, I can, well, again, I can see a possibility where we could do a temporary there, if I can be convinced on that. I've got a dog and I plan on using a dog park. It's not like I'm against a dog park. It's just, it's just tough to find the right location.
All right. So let's give it two weeks when we have at least an almost full quorum. I mean, an almost full slate of councillor, not quorum, but. And then let's give you a more solid answer.
Plus we have two weeks of scooching then.
We're gonna scooch. Yeah, we are.
And I think it behooves this council to go for a walk.
Please do.
And to, I did that, and to look at it from a perspective of moving those fences a little further away from what's an issue, which is the walking path and the pool. So I think it behooves us to do a little bit more homework to convince ourselves that it might be workable.
Right. I, I recognize that the council is comprised of seven. Am I correct? That the seven are the seven. The dog owners whom you represent want to feel safe. And I, you know, with this whole, if council can move any plot of land at any time, what's to stop us from putting up that fence, knowing if it is prime real estate, you can take it. You know, if you have something that comes up, like that to me seems like a little moot point since you just made the point about the agridome that way. So if, if it can be moved at any point, what is stopping? Is it the size of land? Is it the dogs themselves? If it's the location being prime real estate, we haven't taken it. You just told me that yourself.
Yeah.
Right? So I guess I represent hundreds of your constituents.
Yeah.
Hundreds of them and not seven, who make the decision for these hundred people. I, I, I feel quite a burden to make a very strong argument that this is well-discussed and exciting for a large population of this town.
Okay, so if I remember right, let's get a little bit of sense of proportions here. We have to represent the whole of the town, right?
Right.
So you represent a committee, a group that is a portion of that whole. So this is why we don't take those decisions lightly. And you don't take it lightly either because you feel passionate about the voice you represent. And I give it to you. So give us that two weeks. Let us do a little bit more of our homework. It's getting late in the season. You want to get started, we hear you. So if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Thank you for your passion. Thank you for coming today and for addressing this issue. Thank you. All right. Seven Ave, the Seventh Street and a bypass. Councillor Court, you have an issue with traffic?
Just briefly, there's, there's a couple of new families though, and I've heard from one that's got quite a few children, that the grandma actually walks them across that road. She's afraid to let them go by themselves. There hasn't been an accident there, but there, the traffic there goes at a pretty good clip, seventy kilometers an hour. So I had a discussion with the bulker, Stephen Foreman, who takes care of that road. And he said the way to do it is to get a town, a letter from the town. He could present it to his boss and they can then move it up the ladder. We've had this discussion.
In the past, yes, we did.
But I think what, the best way of doing this would be to get one of those parents or whoever it is and even close to where I live at Seventh Street, there's a lot of kids. If they can get a petition up and present it to town, I believe that would be the best way to get something moving on this. Even if it's just a flashing, like warning light.
You're talking about Ninth Avenue, not Seventh.
But next to my house there, yeah.
Right. And so it's just at the intersection where kids are crossing.
Walking across to school all the time here.
Okay, all right. So are you ready to?
Jeff? I just want to clear, councillor, and maybe it's any of the above, is the intent, and the details are a little fuzzy, but I think we all remember having this conversation probably three years ago. I was telling councillor Court beforehand and we, they did their speed assessment because they had that big marquee sign down in the bottom of the hill across from Gordatkins. But I, I never heard anything more from that. So I'll make a point of following up on that, first of all. But is the intent to lower the speed on Ninth to fifty as it would be consistent in the residential? Or is it, like you said, maybe there's a, I, I don't remember what street lighting looks like on that corner, but some type of lighting or warning signal or maybe any of the above? Are we just looking for improvement?
Yes.
Improvement or whichever way it comes.
Okay. Had a few car accidents here. I know that, because I hear them out there, one or two. But the concern is the children walking across that road. Maybe the golf carts that are going across.
Well, that shouldn't, right? That is an issue. Anyways.
So, so mayor, I think if, I'll, I'll circle back around. I was just searching my email to see if I could find the person that I was communicating with originally, and I haven't found it yet. But I'll circle back to that original request and see what came of it. But if you would like councillor to make a resolution to pursue it, just so it's back up on the priorities again, to engage Alberta Transportation in doing something with pedestrian safety on Ninth, something along those lines, I'd appreciate it.
I'll make a resolution to what he just said, be, just.
Okay.
I, I will try to engage somebody over in that area to, to, to get a petition of the people in that area. And so that gives a little more weight, I believe.
So it's a resolution?
Resolution to engage Alberta Transportation concerning the
Safety.
Pedestrian safety.
Of Seventh Street and, and Ninth Avenue or the five oh one bypass.
Okay, all right. All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, so now let's go to aid committees and reports. CAO report. You can see Jeff thinks that he had a little bit more time to deal with things. There has been some very interesting development, I would say, coming out of the Ntutapi monument unveiling. And yesterday with the raising of the flag. I didn't recognize our Channel Thirty-two today and I want to thank you so much for being there, Corey, on both occasions and taking some footage of both events. Thank you very much. And to all of you councillors who were there on Saturday, thanks. And councillor Silk was there yesterday. I was extremely impressed by the Police of the Blood Tribe who came in support of both events. I felt it a duty to be there and to give not only their indigenous youth support, but yesterday to give support to the town. It was interesting. They had councillors all together. We saw three councillors over those three days, more than I have seen in a long time. Councillor Delaney was there, councillor.
Big Head.
Big Head.
Big Head was there and Frank.
No, Richard Red Crow was on Saturday.
Richard Red Crow was there too. And so those councillors were really adding the support to what we're trying to do. So it was much appreciated. So it was much appreciated. And I think something good might come out of it. Let's carry on with the Capital Projects Report. You've seen, uh, a lot of things are moving forward.
If I could just back it up a second on part of this, I guess it's part of your report.
Yep.
Dealing with Seventh Street and the amount of traffic on that road.
Yeah.
It's pretty significant. And, uh, it's good to see that speed thing there, that, that clocks everything. But there's a lot of traffic on, on that road. I, I live on it, and I didn't realize how much was buzzing up and down there every day.
Well, it's because of the school, eh?
And it's the only road that goes all the way through town, except for Main Street.
It's really an axe.
Thought you'd speak to that really quick, and councillor Court, I agree, I was quite shocked at the total sum within a six-day period. It went by there, and we waited until Covid, uh, school restrictions were off to map it, when it was normal school. If I could be reasonably pleased with one part of it, is the small percentage that were over the posted speed limit at that location. Now, some were way too far over the posted speed limit, by the way. Um, but thankfully, we were at only, you know, thirty-six hundred and two hundred and sixty were over, and some of those were one or two or three over. So, while it's obviously a concern, I was, it was a smaller percentage of total traffic than I thought. Um, but it was a way bigger number than I thought, over six days, for sure. And we may need to put that out on, frankly, on Ninth, on that intersection of Ninth and Seventh, and get a feel for the speeds going down Ninth as well.
Good. Okay. Is there anything else you want to, uh, discuss regarding A B, the Capital Project? Jeff, there is one thing I would like to ask you. You mentioned that there was more breakdown at the sewer plant, I'm getting a little nervous, to say the least. Because I cannot see the retrofit happening before the end of the summer at the best.
Oh, no, no, you'd be terribly optimistic to think.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, uh, therefore I'm getting more and more nervous.
So, I, I went up last week, um, we had two banks on the north side that were down, uh, two RBCs, and it was a new break, it was something they hadn't experienced before with a different part. Now Curtis is still saying that we're okay, provided we can give him enough labor to work on it, which is what we're doing. So really, we've had our, our seasonal public work staff have been spending the bulk of their time in the sewer plant.
Okay.
And so as long as he has the labor to keep on top of it, they're okay.
Okay.
Um, so, a- and that's all moving forward, uh, we should be to the point to be able to go to tender, I'm hoping in July. Now, that will take some time. And I, I don't anticipate that this project commences at best until spring of next year.
Oh, my goodness.
I just don't think we'll be there yet.
Wow.
Because the phase two tender we put out is for, there isn't a detailed design, so it still needs an evaluation and detailed design, we'll have, you'll have somebody coming, possibly in July to one of your meetings to talk about, um, the technology options, pros and cons, what the recommendation is, and those kinds of things are coming. We think we know where we're going, but we wanted to address council with the option, so Curtis is okay, provided we can keep him labor to when he needs it.
Okay, so Jeff, let me ask you then the question. From the labor perspective, has there been enough money set aside in a budget for that purpose? You have those summer stu- uh, su- summer staff, that has been budgeted. But what about the other projects? I was short on labor now.
So they may be getting extended by a few days here and there, but it's manageable, I'm not too worried, so even if we have to send someone like Daniel or Mario up to the sewer plant, because they have more experience, that might delay Second Avenue by a couple of days, but that's, I think that's an okay trade-off, I think it's okay.
All right. Okay, just want to make sure we're not falling into a situation where we're so short of labor.
No, no, it's not, it's not handcuffing us terribly. Um, but, but certainly it's, it's one more thing with the same amount of people, right? So, but it's okay.
All right, well, keep us posted.
Yep.
The CPO report, we kinda spoke about it, unless you want to address that.
Quick question. So Jeff, I see that Sean spent ten point two five hours in May on foot patrols, which is less than fifty minutes a day. Uh, I'm not convinced that's adequate, at least in the summertime.
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, yes, I would agree. Let's put it that way, simply.
I could just add to that, on Wednesday of last week, there was coming up the, like, fast gas in the Royal Bank, and there was a person urinating right there in the parking of the Royal Bank, and right across the road, a person was passed flat out on the sidewalk in, in front of the Kuno Hotel steps there. So I really agree with you, I think there needs to be more boots on the ground. I mean, I, I contacted Sean, and he responded very quickly to it. And, but I, I believe there should be more visible people out there.
Councillor Silk?
So in addition to that, um, has anyone seen the RCMP do foot patrols? At all?
They're often with Sean, but I'm not watching, uh, I'm, I'm here, so I don't know for sure.
I do see them occasionally.
Yeah, I have.
Occasional being the operative word there.
Yes.
I used to see them quite often, but I haven't seen them of late.
Does the police committee have a meeting anytime soon with, uh, the RCMP?
We don't have one scheduled right now, no.
Something that we could put together.
Perhaps some emphasis on, you know, some boots on the ground would be nice.
Jeff, we keep it in your hand, and maybe if you want to contact the sergeant.
I can do that.
Okay, there are some committee reports there, not too many. The old man, uh, River.
If I could, man.
Yes.
The rec board did discuss, uh, a bike park with Rob and Amy.
I saw that.
I really think we'd like to, in my mind, I'd like to see that pushed ahead.
Okay.
I really think that thing would be used as much as the, uh, water park.
Okay.
A lot of kids with bikes.
Councillor?
Well, I can speak to that, um. Rob Bamy did come to our, uh, our, um, rec board, and, um, he didn't have a lot of information.
No.
And so we sent him back with, go make some friends, here's the friends you need to make friends with. And, um, go do some homework, go find out, because he's got one park that he's, he really likes. And we, he, he just came wanting to know what to do. And so the council that sat around the table gave him some direction, and now he's running with it.
Thank you.
So I don't think it should come to us until he's there, but he is working on it, I know he is. And we definitely gave him some great people, names, McTinnels, a few of them, that are really pushing for it. So, that's my understanding.
So councillor Brown, if I understand, he will come back to your committee?
Correct.
And report to you, and you will then bring back the recommendation?
Because there's nothing to talk about yet.
Absolutely.
So we wanted him to get the boots on the ground, get the information, do the homework before. I mean, we did the same thing with the dog park, right?
Yeah, let's do it first.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Councillor?
Councillor?
Yeah, I apologize, I'm the one that said to Rob, go talk to the rec board.
Councillor, it was the right thing to do, because as all the people sitting at the table, we were able to, a- amongst all of us, come up with, this is your group, go talk to them, they are your bike group, he didn't even know half of them, so it worked really well.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, we got a bike group going, yeah.
That will do good things.
Thank you, councillor.
All right, so, um, councillor Silk, do you want to report on the good news on Southgrew?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Um, so some time ago, uh, Entercan, Natural Resources Canada came out with a grant proposal where they wanted to put some money towards electronic vehicle charging stations. And Southgrew put together a proposal to Entercan and said, listen, we'd like to administer this program for you, and so you give us the three million bucks and we'll administer it for you, and we'll return and report and tell you what communities are getting what. So, Southgrew, good on them, they're going ahead with this project, and we'll see more electronic vehicle charging stations sprinkled all over southern Alberta.
Okay, there is another aspect. Uh, councillor, councillor Silk, uh, volunteered to head that committee, that subcommittee, the only thing's councillor, all of a sudden, it kinda hit my mind. Uh, are you getting some per diem from, uh, Southgrew? Or do we need to approve that?
I don't know, and I don't know.
Okay, so you find out and you report next month to us, okay? Because then we need to approve that.
You bet, okay.
All right, so let's carry on on the correspondence. You will see there is again, uh, a slew of towns that went about in support of the RCMP, I have nothing against a support of the RCMP, but what I'm against is to make a decision be- before having the facts given to us, and that's a little bit more of an issue to me. So we shall wait and see when that report comes.
There's already five more of those for next council.
I mean, honestly, it's starting, I don't understand. I really don't understand, it, it's very disturbing to me, but whatever. Uh, under G, if you see there is a Prime Minister's office, respond to a letter to tell them that I acknowledge a letter.
Prime Minister passed the book?
Yes, it's, uh, you got it councillor, you got it.
Okay.
And beside that, we, uh, shall adjourn and deal with confidential item. So thank you very much, Corey, for all your good work, much appreciated.
Move to go on a closed session.
Move to go on closed session, all in favor? All right, so we know.